Let's call this December 7th, 2023 Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Cobain?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Dolchek?
Here.
Mrs. Howesum?
Here.
All present, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is District Goals. Our district's three-year strategic plan is made up of four strategic priorities. Tonight's meeting includes requests for the approval of purchasing radios and additional security cameras for our district. This upcoming agenda item ties directly to our strategic priority of leveraging funding and facilities and Objective 4.1, focused on the consistent application of security protocols and procedures for district buildings. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Reiba for recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Howesum. We do not have an OSBA student achievement for this month, so I'm going to turn it over to our Athletic Director, Denny Ziegler, for some athletic accomplishments from the fall. Denny?
Thank you, Dr. Reiba. It's always an honor to recognize our students for their goals and their achievements as well as their, you know, thorough successes throughout their season. The athletes we have here tonight are fall sport athletes who qualified for the state meet, and these athletes dedicated their time through the spring, through the summer, and through even a grueling fall to be able to, you know, to compete at the highest level down at the state meet. Our first recognition, I want to bring up Mr. Steve King to recognize our boys' golfer.
I'd like to thank you guys for having us here tonight to recognize Vinny for qualifying as an individual to the state golf tournament. Vinny was a four-year letterman for the golf program. I first met him as an eighth grader at our middle school golf camp. He was just starting out then with the game, grew and loved, grew to love the game, and then worked hard and became a three-time Greater Cleveland Conference First Team member, all right, as well as honorable mention All Northeast District. I remember watching Vinny over the summer before his senior year, and he was putting up some pretty good scores, so I had a lot of hope for his senior season and what he could accomplish with it. He then opened at our home tournament with a 93, so I kind of lost all hope then. Just kidding. He fought hard all year to improve and ended up shooting nine rounds under 80, highlighted by an even par 71 at the Walsh Invitational, 75s at the Brunswick Invitational, Worcester Invitational, and the Midwest Prep Classic in Pennsylvania. At districts, Vinny shot 77, and after waiting for about two and a half hours as all the other players came in, he found himself in a four-man for-two-spot playoff to go to state. He played an amazing hole under a ton of pressure to make par, and as two of the four other players made bogey, he won the playoff and qualified for state. As a coach, it's amazing to see one of your players put underneath that amount of pressure and respond in a positive way. At state, he played the scarlet course on the campus of Ohio State. He shot 80, 83 on a very tough course. There isn't a better place to finish your career than at the state tournament, and I thank Vinny for letting me be a part of it. Vinny's best golf is ahead of him. He still hasn't decided where he's going to play at college, but he is going to play at college, and I look forward to watching him at the next level. Congratulations on a great year, and good luck to you in the future.
Congratulations, Vinny. At this time, I wanted to recognize our girls' state qualifying cross-country team. This is a group of athletes who, from the beginning of the season, started out a little bit slow. We knew that they had the talent, you know, to get to where they needed to from a state perspective. A lot of hard work, a lot of dedication, a lot of tough, you know, training through the heat, through the wind, through the rain, through the snow, whatever it was. You know, I feel like these girls were really, really persevering. So at this time, I want to call up Coach Spilker to introduce the girls' cross-country team.
Okay. Hello. My name's Angela. I am the girls' head coach for the cross-country team. This was my first year as the girls' head coach, and it was truly an honor to witness these girls come together as a team and compete at the state meet for the first time in 13 years. Many people think cross-country is an individual sport, but this team showed what can happen when you run together and for each other. I'm beyond proud of the bond we formed this season. Some of our season highlights included placing second at the conference meet behind Shaker, who joined our conference this year, and also placed fourth at the state meet. We placed fourth at districts, eighth in the region, and then ended up 14th in the state when we competed at the state meet in Columbus. The bar is set so high for next season, and I'm excited for the future of our program, but I'm also a little sad to say goodbye to our three seniors. I wanted to thank the parents for everything, from pasta parties to every word of encouragement and support to helping me during the week of states. We couldn't have done it without you guys. I'm so proud and grateful to be part of the Strongsville community, and I know our team is as well. Competing at states was a dream come true for our team, and we will never forget the weekend. This team will always hold a special place in my heart for making my first season as head coach as good as it gets. So I'm going to call up our team now and give you your certificates, and then follow Vinny. But Ally Carey. Yay! Renee Seaco. Jenny Guo, who's not here, but she was our number-one runner all season. Hannah Jika. Lindsay Magyar. Gianna Padone. Tina Verres. And Haley Smith. Thank you.
All right, I see our athletes and their parents are leaving. I know we've got midterms and finals coming up, so I'm sure there's some studying to be done. Next on the agenda is public comment. We have 10 slips tonight for public comment. I'm going to call names. If you could approach the podium and state your name and your address. You have three minutes. Because of the amount of slips that we have, we have 10 that would like to talk to us. I'm going to use a timer on my phone, kind of point my microphone down at it. If you could just be, you know, aware of the three-minute timer, we appreciate it. This is a time for you to address the board and talk. We appreciate you guys being here, and I will start with the first slip. Brian Cutter?
Hi, guys. I'm Brian Cuttry.
Oh, so sorry.
All right, guys. What we're looking at right now is what I call the Sereno Effect. Weston Churchill said, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." The guy I'm talking about is Lou Sereno, that gives his life to these children behind us. Everything he does is about these kids. I know you guys have received tons of emails and letters and phone calls, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's affected my son and my life as well, of what a good-hearted guy this is for our community, okay? For our city, for our county, for our state. You know, I was going through all kinds of different ways of approaching this board today, and it was so many thoughts through my head about how to come at this and how to talk about it, but really, I got to talk about the character of the man. And I want you guys to please, in your heart, reconsider your decision to possibly reinstate this guy. He means the world to these guys standing back here, all these kids. They're here for a reason. This isn't political. They don't get anything out of this. They got to go home, they got to study, they got stuff to do. Me too. You guys do, I get it. You're working now, but this means the world to me if this guy would be able to do what he did for my kid over the past two years he's been in this school. He's a sophomore now. His name's Bronco Cuttry. He's a good kid. He loves football. But even better, he loves school now. His grades went from a two-point average to a 3.5, big time because of this guy I'm talking to you guys about. I believe it 100%. He influenced my son to study, to take things seriously, and you know what, guys? To find a way, right? He preaches "find a way" to the kids. Find a way to get to practice. Find a way to get your homework done. Find a way to get the grade point average to what you need it to be to play football here in Strongsville. With that, I don't want to tuck your ear off, guys. I don't want to go on and on about it, but I want you to know that I'm very passionate about what this guy's done for my family and my son. There's all kinds of other stories you're going to hear today, and you'll probably hear some kids speak too, but please reconsider this. When you leave tonight, take a couple days to talk. Look at the optics. They've changed. The narrative is different than when this started. It's not like it was a few weeks ago or a month ago, okay? The optics are different now, as you can see. Please reach deep down inside and think about this, and take a few days to mull this over. That's all I ask. Please, and thank you for listening to me. My name's Brian Cuttry again.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Braylon Daly. Again, Braylon, if you could state your name and your address?
Yes, my name is Braylon Daly. I live at 171 on our Ridge Creek Road. Coach Sereno is a great leader, on and off the field. These past three, four years, I know Coach Sereno, he has sat my back every step of the way. Whatever I wanted to do, I had to do. Coach Sereno gives me good tips on life, on and off the field, me and the players We are pleading with the board and Dr. Robert to reconsider your decision to reinstate Coach Sereno. Thank you.
Thank you, Braylon. Next, Donna Stevens. If you could state your name and your address?
Hi, I'm Donna Stevens, 17024 Raccoon Trail, and I am here speaking on behalf of my son, Joey Stevens. He had to work tonight and couldn't get someone to take a shift, but he wanted his voice to be heard, so I said I would read his information for him. So this is Joey's voice. Hello, everyone. My name is Joe Stevens, and I finished my four years with the Strongsville Football Program this year. I have been coached by Coach Sereno for all four years of my high school career. I have lettered in three of those four years, and I was named team captain my senior year. I've also been an academic scholar-athlete. I stand before you today not just as a graduate of this great program, but as a testament to the power of mentorship and guidance provided by Coach Sereno. Recent events have put a shadow upon our football team, and the decision to dismiss our coach of his duties has definitely sent shockwaves through our community. The unfortunate incident involving some members of the team, while regrettable and inexcusable, should not serve as the sole decision of our coach's legacy or the value he has brought to the school. I speak from personal experience when I say that our coach has been more than just a leader on the field. He has been a mentor, a companion, and a guiding light for students who have walked the high school halls. It's crucial to acknowledge that the actions of a few individuals do not define the entire team or the leadership that has worked to instill values of integrity, responsibility, and character. Our coach has spent years building a culture of accountability and respect, aiming to mold not just better athletes, but better individuals. The actions taken at the Pro Hall of Fame Stadium goes against everything Coach Sereno stands for and has taught us throughout our time here. As a former player under Coach Sereno, I cannot ignore the impact our coach has had on my life and the lives of many others within our community. I stand before you to not condone or to justify the actions that happened, but to offer a perspective that goes beyond a single mistake. Our coach, while not being dismissed from any responsibility, has been an instrumental figure in shaping the character, values, and discipline of the players who represent this school. The recent incident was a huge error in judgment, one that no one can or should excuse. However, I ask you to look at the larger context. Our coach has dedicated countless hours to instilling not just football skills, but crucial life lessons. For example, our four core values: never missing, finding a way, controlling your response, and giving relentless effort. Coach Sereno has been a mentor, a role model, and a source of guidance for many young individuals, including myself. I ask this board to consider the possibility of redemption and growth. Can I finish? While the recent actions were undoubtedly a misstep, our coach's legacy and his impact on students over the years deserves recognition. I believe in his ability to learn from the setback and to continue positively influencing the lives of students and athletes under his guidance. I am here today asking for your compassion and understanding, not just for our coach, but for the countless lives that could continue to benefit from his mentorship and leadership. I beg you to reconsider the decision and allow our coach the opportunity to make amends, to educate, and to continue the invaluable work of shaping the future leaders of our community. We are pleading with the board to reconsider the decision of the superintendent and reinstate Coach Sereno. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Donna, and thank you for sharing your son's words. Next, we have Allison Grolo. Thank you very much. You could state your address. Your name and address, please.
My name is Allison Grolo. I reside at 10353 Rosalie, and I own the produce market at 12966 Prospect. I am obviously a member of the community, a business owner, and I was a team sponsor this year, and my son is a player on the team. I'm here tonight to ask the board to reconsider this decision, whether you have your own personal reasons of why you decided to release Coach Sereno. I think one very loud message we're hearing here is that these young men are taking away that their actions and mistakes are a direct result of Sereno's release. I genuinely think that's far too much weight for children this age to carry. When I picked up my son from school on the Friday that Lou Sereno was released, I watched these young men leave that school crying. Since then, the overall energy in our home is down. I'm the individual who started the online petition to reinstate Lou Sereno. I was astounded by the number of people who signed that petition in a number of hours and the stories that were posted on there, how this man has impacted their lives. We transferred over from another district this school year, and where we came from had fancy weight room, beautiful stadium, a great coaching staff, but they didn't have Lou Sereno, and that has been an unbelievable difference in our experience in the football program. His energy and efforts compelled me as a business owner to get involved and to sponsor the team, and I can say that that was solely because of his involvement. As a business owner, when you're needing help, who's there? The football team! Who drove them to be there? Lou Sereno, on his own time and his own accord, teaching them what it means to be a good man and a good representative of the community. Above all, I am genuinely concerned how this decision, given its timing with the events at the Hall of Fame, is impacting our young men and how many years that impact will last. For one reason, them feeling responsible, and secondly, the absence of Lou in their lives. Our family and my son have emotions that I would compare to divorce. We feel like we've lost a really important person in our life. This is so much more about winning football games. This man is a positive influence. Please reconsider your decision. I really want him to influence my son. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Next, Scott Mayberry.
I think I'd have this for three minutes exactly.
If you could state your name and your address?
I do have to say Mr. Enagnostu correctly, so that's going to be difficult. Okay, Scott Mayberry, 20387 Sterling Way. Good evening to the board, Dr. Reiba, Mr. Enagnostu, and Mrs. Belko. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'd like to share with you some of my experiences with Lou Sereno. As a parent, and I'm going to get emotional here, I'm sorry. As a parent, you ache when your child has difficulty socially. At this young age, there's nothing worse than social isolation. When my son was a sophomore, he had a difficult schedule, and none of his friends shared his lunch period. Coach Sereno was walking through the cafeteria and noticed he was alone. "Why are you here by yourself?" he said. "All of my friends are in the other lunch period," my son answered. Sereno told him to get his things and follow him to his classroom, and when he walked into the room, he saw it was filled with juniors and seniors on the football team, kids who he looked up to. He turned to my son and said, "From now on, you will eat lunch here with your brothers." As a parent, to hear your child come home and tell that story, that means everything. That is the type of man who Coach Sereno is. My son was a four-year member of the Cantorum Honors Choir at Strongsville, was an all-Ohio swimmer, was named the Model Mustang by the Athletic Department his senior year out of all the athletes. He graduated in the top 5% of his class, is now a freshman at Ohio State in the College of Engineering. He was an average football player at best, and yet he was absolutely broken when he heard this news. He confessed that he had been in discussions with Coach Sereno about being a coach himself and a mentor to the current Strongsville players the way Lou Sereno was to him. If you haven't had a child fortunate to go through the Strongsville Football Program under Coach Sereno, you will never fully understand that. But there are other stories, many that you may have never heard about. Stories about kids who can't make it to practice because of parents' addictions, kids who can't afford to play, kids who lost parents, and parents who have lost children, a former player who has a battle cancer, kids struggling with mental health issues, and kids who are at the darkest moments have nowhere else to turn. And this is not hyperbole. These are actual examples. And you know what they have in common? Each one of them turn to Lou Sereno for consolation, for support, and for healing. Who else has such a resume? Strongsville is a community that values family above all else. We give second chances, and we forgive. Is he perfect? No. He rubs a lot of people the wrong way, even in my own household. Sometimes we were divided, and I'm sure he's given administration headaches over the years. But he is our family, and he is worth reconsideration for all the good things he has done for our children. In closing, I'd like to say I'm thankful for the opportunities that this school district has provided me personally, and to the board and Dr. Reiba for your time and your service to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next, Jeremy, and I'm so sorry, Jeremy, I cannot make out your last name. I'm sorry. You could state your name and address.
My name is Jeremy Knopf. I live on 14527 Bennington Drive. I'm a senior at Strongsville High School and a former player of Lou Sereno. I'm a senior. I just said that, sorry. I played in the Strongsville Football Program for nine years, playing varsity through my four years of high school and being a team captain all four years. Coach Sereno came into the Strongsville Football Program when I was in the fifth grade. I remember that because he came to my youth practice and introduced himself as the new varsity head coach, and ever since then, he's been an immediate impact of my life, being a constant role model and a constant mentor to me. Coach Sereno, I look up to him in a multitude of aspects of my life. He's helped me grow as a man, blossoming from a young boy into a growing man. He's helped me as a student, as an athlete, and will continue to help me grow whether he's a coach here or not. He's taken his job and turned it into a lifestyle, often missing family time and family events to spend time with us, his players, and second family. He bleeds Strongsville green and white, lives and breathes Strongsville football. Stripping him of his position as head coach, I believe is both unjust and undeserved, and I'm certain every single student in the building and many adults in here can agree with me as well. When it comes to the Strongsville Football Hall of Fame incident, Coach Sereno is not putting football before justice, however, he's putting love before justice. He preaches year in and year out family and everything around it. In fact, we have an acronym that we put around "family" that goes "Forget About Me, I Love You," and he put that into a real-life scenario. Notice how I say "family" and not "team." Coach Sereno turned a football team into a family and a brotherhood. There's many alumni in here that I still consider brothers to this day, and when I graduate and I become an alumni, there are so many brothers in this room that I will always consider brothers and always love and always look down to, look up to. I will always love them. Coach Sereno took over this program in 2017, and since then has blessed each and every soul in this program, teaching us morals, discipline, and love, something some kids have never learned at school or at home. Coach Sereno is not only a coach, he's a mentor, he's a teacher, and he's a role model. He's even a student to us, listening to what we have to say and holding on to it. Coach Sereno has a special bond, which I can guarantee every single player in this room holds so dear to their heart like I do. In fact, when I first heard the news and he shook my hand, I started tearing up because I love him so much as a coach, as a mentor, and as a second father figure in my life. I have nothing for the utmost respect for the school board and for Dr. Reiba, but I do not respect the decision of you guys firing him, and I do believe that he needs to be reinstated. I'm not a very good public speaker. I'm not, this is not in my comfort zone, but I stepped out of my comfort zone to step up and stand up for what's right and what I believe is right. I spoke to the news previously with those two beautiful young ladies on the wall. I think that this shows me stepping out of my comfort zone, showing my love for Coach Sereno. I do believe that that is something that should staple Lou Sereno getting his job back. So I am pleading with the school board and Dr. Robert to reinstate Coach Sereno as the head coach of the Strongsville Football Mustangs. head coach of the Strongsville Football Mustangs.
Next, Veronica. You can state your name and address.
Veronica Liebchen, 14527 Bennington Drive. I'm sure that you have all spent many hours reading emails this week, thinking about and reflecting upon the contract non-renewal of Coach Sorino. I want to thank in particular, before I start, Dr. Raiba for his time throughout the week, and Sharon Kilbane for her incredibly kind and insightful conversation with me earlier this week over the phone. Lou Sorino is a beloved community figure that has made a positive impact and difference in hundreds of lives in our Strongsville community. He cares deeply for the youth of our community and their development into young men. I want to take some time to share with everyone a highlight reel of his accomplishments over his seven-year tenure as head football coach here. June 7-on-7 tournaments for player development, the creation of the Football Backers Program, which raises an average of over $100,000 per year through fundraising for much-needed equipment for our football teams to help the school with their funding, annual family picnic, annual signing day for the incoming team, year-long lifting and running program offseason, high school mentorship of youth programs through coaching, refereeing, and volunteering, year-round community service opportunities, including adaptive football program at Camp Cheerful, community events at Giant Eagle, setup and teardown of community events in the square and at the chalet, and youth league coaching and refereeing, GPA incentive programs with an average GPA on the team this year of 3.6, indoor football on Saturdays in the offseason, increased the size of the high school football program nearly 150%, and most importantly, only one of two fall sports in the district to get a positive rating on their overall district scorecard that the school district keeps in the areas of athletic performance, communication, impactful community involvement, and continuing the athletic excellence. I cannot put into words what Lou Sorino has done for my family. My son was just up here, and he is a kind-hearted, genuine kid that loves football and his friends, but traditionally does not love school. Because of Lou Sorino's involvement encouraging and motivating my son, my son will go to college next year and wants to come back to Strongsville to do the exact same thing as his mentor, teach high school, be a high school football coach, and have a family. My son has gone to Coach Sorino for advice on every part of growing up, and Coach Sorino has always helped him, mentored him, and never let him down. Lou Sorino is like another parent to my son, yet my son is not alone. As Lou has done these same things for hundreds of other students and athletes in Strongsville, he is an invaluable class act of a man. This 2023 season, I was the head team or senior mom for whatever that's worth to anyone, but I wanted to share with you some of the senior football players write-in votes for our coach superlatives at the end of the season. Nearly every player voted the same for best at game time mentor, Coach Sorino's weekly pregame message. "I am only one, but I am one. I cannot do everything, but I can do something, and with grace, I shall do." Many players also voted for Coach Sorino for best role model with the following feedback: "He always tells us to create a legacy for yourself that others can look at and that you'll be proud of. He's a true God among men who always tries to do the right thing. He always lets us understand what we did wrong and allows us to learn from him, and he's always empathetic towards his players after the game and always pushes us to be the best version of ourselves on and off the field." I'm adding my name to the long list of Lou Sorino supporters, as well as voicing my concern over how Coach Sorino's contract ending has adversely affected the high school athletes and students. I am pleading with the board and the administration to please reconsider the decision of the superintendent and reinstate Coach Sorino as head football coach. Thank you.
Next, we have Ryan Kremph. You can state your name and address.
Ryan Kremph, 11469 Reserve Way. My name is Ryan Kremph, and I'm a 2022 graduate of Strongsville High School and a former player of Coach Sorino's. I spent my first two years of high school at St. Ed's. After two years, I decided to come back to Strongsville and play for Sorino. To be completely honest with you, I really do regret wasting two years at St. Ed's that I could have spent with Coach Sorino. I have known Coach Sorino since I was in middle school. I remember as far back as sixth grade, speaking with Coach Sorino at many of my games, making a personal connection with me. I remember Coach Sorino speaking with my parents and my coaches. I never saw another coach go nearly as far as Coach Sorino to show his face and build a relationship with players and families. After spending two years at St. Ed's and then two at Strongsville, I then went on to play for Ashland University. I know all three programs very well. In my time at all three programs, I have been surrounded by incredible coaches, from Coach Lombardo at St. Ed's to Coach Owens at Ashland. Not a single coach compares to Coach Sorino. Most of my teammates have been around his program and coached by him since seventh grade. I was only directly coached by him for two years, and Coach Sorino impacted my life so drastically, I made sure I had the opportunity to tell you all about it tonight. Coach Sorino's impact on a player goes way beyond the football field. He turns boys into good men. For example, Coach Sorino drills in the four core values of Strongsville football. Coach Sorino's core values are number one, never miss; number two, no BCD, find a way; number three, be relentless; and number four, control your response. When followed, Coach Sorino's core values will help young men succeed, not only on the field, but also in life. There have been almost two classes that have passed since I graduated, and I still remember and live by Coach Sorino's core values to this day. I can tell you for a fact that I am not the only one. I have spoken to countless former players who agree, and I speak on behalf of them as well tonight. Coach Sorino has produced men like Andrew Keating at the Naval Academy and Ryan Keating at the Air Force Academy, men like J.D. Duplain and Blake Miller, who are star players for Michigan State in Princeton. He has sent Garrett Clark to Findlay, he's sent Joe Gillette to Maine, and Tommy Zacharias to Mercyhurst, who is also currently a teacher and football coach for Strongsville High School. That is just naming a few off a long list of stand-up men that Coach Sorino has shaped. He is a role model as a teacher to students. As a coach, he is that same leader, mentor, and role model to players in the locker room, in the weight room, and on and off the field. He taught me everything I know about my position and formed me into a college athlete, but most importantly, Coach Sorino still helps form me into a better man. Coach Sorino still plays an important role in my life. He holds us to the highest standard and does not tolerate negative or inappropriate behavior. He challenges his young men to do the uncomfortable and push themselves academically and athletically. Some kids may have not have liked it, but it was in their damn best interest to make them a better student and athlete. Take a look at the sideline on the home game. The sideline fills with former players who come to support Coach Sorino to show their gratitude for all that he has done for us. That demonstrates the impact that Coach Sorino makes on the program. Do you think that that same support will be at those games on a Friday night if Coach Sorino is no longer the head coach? You guys tell us that you believe not renewing Coach Sorino is best for the program, but let me ask you guys this: Do you think it's in the best interest of the program to force players to share helmets instead of buying a helmet for every kid? Do you guys believe it's in the best interest of the program to refuse to recondition a single pair of shoulder pads, which is required every season? Coach Sorino does not deserve that. The players in this program do not deserve that. If you think that you will find another man like Coach Sorino to lead this program, you are mistaken. I speak for myself and many others that we will always support Coach Sorino no matter where he goes. He has created a forever family here at Strongsville that will live with me and many others for the rest of our lives. I would also like to use this platform to thank Coach Sorino for everything that he has personally done for me and my good friends here at Strongsville. Coach Sorino, you have impacted all of us and bettered our lives in so many ways. Thank you for your time.
If you could state your name and address.
Nicole Sizzler, 17512 West 130th Street. So I just want to start by saying thank you, Dr. Raiba, and the board, for letting us speak tonight here. I've been a resident of this city for 15 years, and I have four children, one graduate and three current students. The current students are all boys. I have a fifth grader, a seventh grader, and a ninth grader. They all play football. This means that I get to see football at all levels, SFL, middle school, and high school. I felt so proud over the years to live in such a strong community, and I was even more impressed to enter this sub-community of football families. It is truly unlike any other community I've ever experienced. Over the years, Coach Sorino has gone out of his way to make sure that he knew my children and encouraged them to keep playing hard so that one day they could play for him. Well, that was this year. It was exciting yet overwhelming to enter this commitment. For those that don't know, even at a high school level, football training is truly intense. Throughout the process, the players become so close, furthering that community bond. Coach Sorino has instilled this sense of community within the group, so much so that you have this, this overflowing support into the halls on his behalf. After the news broke of his non-renewal, emotions ran high. It came at such poor timing for these 130 athletes. Then, to further the confusion, we were left without any clear information for a few days, so further speculation occurred. After the superintendent sent out his letter that stated the recommendation was to take the football program in another direction, people still had a lot of questions, and misinformation was running rampant. Was it because of the Hall of Fame? Was it because of the alleged vandalized bathrooms that our players didn't know about? Was it because of the losing record? See, when leadership isn't at the forefront of how these decisions are made and conveyed to us as constituents, this is what happens: confusion. As a mom, what struck me the most was a statement in a long email that came from our superintendent on December 4th that read, "The many positive things that Coach Sorino has done and continued to bring to the football program were taken into consideration, as were the communication received from current and past parents and student athletes." So I started to think, did I miss a survey? Was I supposed to give my opinion? Did they talk to my son, part of the reason why we have a program? So I started to ask around, and everyone I asked said, "No." So clearly, I don't know everyone, but it made me start to think, were the only opinions that were taken into consideration the negative ones? How do you not... As the leadership for our school, I ask this question humbly before you tonight: How do you not speak to the program and the athletes? As a football mom for the class of 2027, I know these boys well, and I can assure you that after talking to some of them, they weren't asked about their thoughts on the coach or the program. Instead, the whole team had to go home, and bear the weight of the media and the keyboard warriors who were hiding behind anonymous posts, discussing opinions about how they should feel responsible for a man losing his coaching job. So tonight, again, I humbly come before you and ask that at this pivotal moment in time, you do the right thing and show these kids that sometimes speaking up does make a change. Letting your voice be heard as a constituent matters, even if it's scary, because the leaders in place will listen and take your side of the story into consideration. There was a little joke going around on the Strongsville sites, calling those of us that support Lou his crusaders, and saying things like, "What are you going to do? What's going to happen? What are you going to prove by going tonight?" This is my hope, I have an answer. I hope that as rational adults, with all of these eyes on us here tonight, that we can do the right thing. They're watching. Let's use this as an opportunity to grow even more as a community, set in an example that decisions are not always final, and that everyone deserves a second chance to get things right. And I think that if any community is possible of that, it's this one. Thank you.
Next and last, we have James Swayze.
Are you admitting to our speakers tonight?
No, I'm not.
More than 10 slips?
No, I have 10 slips in front of me. George, do you have any more slips?
I do not.
No, I have 10 slips.
I, James Swayze, 20416 Scotch Pine Way. So I'm just here before you tonight just to hopefully change your minds about Coach Sorino's contract and hopefully get you guys to reinstate him and let him come back for next year. So I'll just be naming a few characteristics of Coach Sorino on why he's the perfect fit for the position of a Strongsville Football Program head coach. All right, so first, Coach Sorino is very innovative. He creates solutions and knows how to think flexibly. He created and implemented Friday morning workouts before school referred to as Championship Friday that helped our team grow and something our team enjoyed doing. Coach also developed the idea of going to Manta Fieldhouse on Saturday night for extra practice. These always had a huge turnout with high school and middle school players coming for extra work, and everyone loved the practice and the idea. Coach Sorino is resilient in everything he does. He is always working and spending his individual free time to better the team and his players. The high school roster is over 100 players, and Coach Sorino is able to identify every player by name and something specific to them. Coach Sorino responds to everything in a very disciplined way. He never loses control of his emotions and always thinks rationally. Core value number four, created by Coach Sorino, control your response. Coach Sorino is very collaborative. He listens and values individual contributions to the team. He's all about the players and playing for the team, not for themselves. Coach Sorino is also very good at communication, gain information to everyone. He's already sent the June and July practice calendar for the 2024 season to all the players and all the parents. Coach Sorino is also global. He has numerous things for the Strongsville community, such as the mulching program where the football team and coaches and players volunteer together to mulch the houses of those in the community. He also has the football program volunteer to set up and clean up Strongsville festivities such as Homecoming and the Red Burnoff. Coach Sorino implements the youth camp for younger players in the program. The Strongsville High School Football Program volunteers to teach players at the middle school and SFL levels different football skills. The youth camp is a huge success, and many players, coaches, and parents have all expressed how much everyone enjoys it. Coach Sorino is also very welcome to diversity. On the Strongsville High School Football roster, there are 58 minorities, including Asian, African-American, Middle Eastern, and Hispanic. This means that about half the team is composed of minorities. Lastly, Coach Sorino is empowered. He takes personal responsibility for all his actions and the actions of the team. He understands that his players are his kids. Coach Sorino has done numerous things to connect and bring them together. One example is the team events that are put together once a month. These team events have been a huge success during my time with the program and has connected me with the rest of our team. In case the crowd is unaware, I just described the Strongsville City Schools District definition of what a Model Mustang is. According to the Strongsville City Schools District, the Model Mustang is the district's instructional plan creating opportunities for our students and staff to be innovative, resilient, collaborative, global, and empowered learners and educators. Coach Sorino is the definition of a Model Mustang.
I actually changed my plans to be here. I was in Philadelphia, came straight from the airport here to be here tonight, so.
Mike, if you could do your name and address.
20374 Traymore Lane. Thank you, guys, and this is great. Praise to you guys for taking the time to be here tonight. This just shows a lot. So I'm not going to go on and on. I could do it. I could take my whole three minutes for how much Coach Sorino has meant to me and my family and what I think he means to the community. I do want to go a little bit of a different route, though. Dr. Raiba, first with you. Thank you for the response to the email. I sent a long email that represented a large parent group meeting that had everybody's thoughts, you know, kind of consolidated, and I appreciate the answers that you gave. One of the pieces that was missing, I think, in that response, and I literally just read that, I had a busy week, I read it on the way over here in the car, not driving, but one of the pieces that was missing, and I guess to backstep a hair, it's clear that some things have happened and that Coach Sorino could have handled some things differently, no doubt about that. We all get that. None of us knows the whole story. Definitely no one in this room, I've talked to Lou personally, so I know his side of the story, but I'm not even here to make judgment on that. I guess what I'm asking, and I didn't see come through in the email, is, because I lead people for a living, I lead leaders for a living, so I understand how performance management works, how process improvement works, how you get people who are special and really good at their job, the opportunity to do things, again, for more people so that you have that impact go further. And that's not to say if someone's having infractions in their roles or, you know, compliance violations, whatever, that's a separate thing. We don't have any of that here. This is probably more of, it's challenging for you to lead someone who is that innovative and disruptive, and I mean disruptive in a good way, because he's the person who is willing to take chances and do things differently for the good of the kids, and that's what it's all about, is the kids. So going back to saying all that, where is the opportunity for him to have the chance to demonstrate that he's taken to the coaching and the feedback? And I'm not asking you to answer that, it's more hypothetical, but to the point of, is that a possibility here tonight? I want to be more future-oriented, not looking back at what's happened. Based on what you've heard tonight, and I would actually ask all of you to comment to that, based on what you've seen and heard here tonight, is there enough in your mind to at least have a thoughtful discussion amongst each other to maybe consider giving him the chance under maybe more guidance and supervision with very specific and clear expectations around certain things on how to handle them? Is that something that is a possibility to consider? I ask you to respond. Each of you. I'm not saying to commit to anything, I'm just saying to have that conversation.
I'm saying, Mike, this is a time for us to listen to our constituents. It's not really a time to engage with the board, so if you don't mind, I'm going to say no, we're not going to respond.
How do you feel about that?
As Ms. Hausum shared, it's a time to listen and hear the voices of the community, and so if you would like to have a conver- so if you would like to have a conversation later, we can have that conversation, but not here.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to address the board? Okay. Seeing no one, oh. You could state your name and address, please.
Sure, Ramen Bhoshnab, 21701 Scenic Point. Yeah, I didn't realize we had to fill out slips in order to come up here, so I'm glad you gave me an opportunity. And I don't have a lot, but there's so much that could be said about Coach Sereno, and thankfully, it has been said so well already tonight. But, yeah, it's emotional for me, because he has been such an important influence on my children. And this program is far more about character building than football, and I think that's been echoed by so many tonight. And when, when I want my son to make a good choice, I ask him, what would Coach Sereno Works every time. And, you know, I remember some winter mornings, you know, the boys are out doing the drive, shoveling per Coach Sereno's orders, you know? And that's what, and that's the kind of things that I saw happening. And he teaches athletics, yes, he teaches about the importance of academics, but, but clearly, most importantly, he teaches about community service and family, and the love that draws us all together to do those kinds of things, to improve life for one another. And I'm so grateful for Coach Sereno. And he's made my boys better boys, and he's made my wife and I better parents, so I truly, truly hope there's an opportunity for him to stay around and continue as the heart and soul of this wonderful program that he has fostered. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Come on up.
My name is Howard Wagner, 41558 Drake Road. I wanted to share some personal experiences that I've had with Sereno, how it's affected me in my life, and how I've been able to impact those around me better because of him. I remember freshman year, I was in a team meeting, and I was new to football at the high school level, and he asked a question that I'll never forget. It was, does anyone have a wife in here? Me thinking, I'm a freshman, I don't have a wife. I said, I have a girlfriend, and he goes, no, that's your wife. And I was like, wow, that's really how, how he is. Everything that he does, he is so intense about it, and in the best way possible, like treating your girlfriend as your wife, dating to marry, not dating just to date. He also says to attack everything, like when lifting, he says to attack the lift, to attack your opponents, to attack everything that you do, 100% whether on or off the field. He has inspired me to be a better man. He has made me into such a better person, and I follow all four core values: never miss, no BCD, find a way, control your response, and be relentless every single day in my life. I have him as a teacher. He is more than just a football coach to me, he is a teacher, a mentor, a coach, and a friend. And he has done so much in this community, such as the services that he's done with us, cleaning up the Rip Burnoff on his own will and his own decision, setting up homecoming for our school, contributing in many ways more. And I pray that you please would reconsider your decision and reinstate Coach Sereno. Thank you for your time.
I'm a parent of one of the players on the team, and my oldest son graduated a couple years ago, also played football. And I'll be honest, I was not a Coach Sereno fan. My boys played soccer when they were younger, a little bit of flag football here and there, but Coach Sereno just, I mean, I thought the guy was a jerk, honestly. But what I've learned is that it's really his passion for what he does, for the players, for his commitment. He takes it seriously, and he wants his team, he wants his players, he wants his coaches, and the families that bring these kids to everything that he wants them to be at, to also take it as seriously. And I just hope that we take this seriously, that we don't just have tonight as a formality and kind of waste everyone's time to come out and entertain our words, and that was nice, that was cute, but our decision is made, and thank you guys very much, but that we can show, that we can agree to disagree, that we can have dialogue, and that we can come to what should be done in the best interest of the players and the community. Lastly, I just want to say that, you know, for a football program, for a school, a community, I mean, this is messy. Messy in that, you know, a regular business, you hire people, you fire people, you don't have to have the community come out and ask you about what you did and why you did it. But when you sign up to be a parent, to be a coach, to be a teacher, to be involved in the lives of children, you sign up for messiness. You sign up for all of this that goes into it, because this is not an organization, it's an organism. This thing is alive, and what we do here tonight, what we do here going forward, will have an impact on these kids. They're gonna remember this. And that may not mean anything to you guys in the moment, but as people have already asked, take some time to consider it, to think about it, to be genuine, and what you would do if your son, your daughter, was impacted by something like this, and you had the opportunity to go out and speak up and speak out, and what you would want to see done in the life of an individual who, I mean, he's not on trial, he's not a murderer, he's not a rapist. Whatever you think about him, maybe it's worse than what I thought about him, but the guy won me over, and I just ask you to reconsider your decision.
My name's Ethan Boyd, I'm one of Sereno's former players.
Just leave him an address.
Oh, sorry, my bad, 13513 Drive. I mean, basically, I don't really have to say much. I think this is a pretty good testament of what Coach Sereno is, and this is a testament to him. I mean, growing up, I played sports, and I played in college, and I think it wouldn't matter, like, I mean, I got done early with finals just so I could be here to support Sereno. I mean, we got two other college guys here, there's probably more that wish they could have been here. I mean, there's the relationship building that he's instilled with us, it's truly like a family. I mean, there's guys I still talk to to this day, like, they're truly my brothers, and it's all because of football, and if anything, I think that's the most important thing that matters. I mean, wins and losses, they come and go, but the bonds and the brotherhood that you build together, that's the most important thing. And I just hope that you guys give him another shot, because, I mean, I know I messed up in my life, I know you guys have probably messed up in your life, and you guys just wish for a second chance. I'm not saying it's right what happened, but, I mean, I think he deserves a second chance to make things right. Thank you for your time.
I have a boot on as well.
I saw from the last meeting that I watched. Christine Stanko, 11469 Reserve Way. We're actually Columbia Station, but our, our property is owned for Strongsville City Schools. That's my son Ryan, who transferred from St. Ed's. Still difficult for me to talk about. The transition wouldn't have been as smooth as it was without Coach Sereno, and not because of football, because of how he helped Ryan get acclimated to the school, the new learning system, the new opportunities, the kids. There could have been, it could have went way wrong. He was a junior when he transferred in, COVID time, part of it was online learning, it was a very, very difficult time, and I can say that out of everyone there at that school, it was Coach Sereno that helped my son get through the hard time of transferring from St. Ed's to Strongsville, for many, many reasons as to why he had to transfer. I know you're not gonna engage with us tonight, but as a taxpayer, I feel that, and as a parent, and as a part of the community, I feel that we have a right to know as to why Coach is being let go. Not sure what his status is as far as being a teacher anymore. I think that would be a huge loss, not only does he impact the football players, but I think he does affect the children that he does teach to. And I'd like to hear from the board as to why you think this is beneficial to the students, to the student athletes, and to the program. Why is it beneficial? And I would hope, I don't know the story, I haven't talked to Coach Sereno, it's really none of my business, I know what I know, what I've seen on the news, it's a bad thing that happened, kids make mistakes, like the kids have said, we've all made mistakes, I've made plenty of mistakes. I don't think it's fair to put it on Coach Sereno if that's what is happening here with the Hall of Fame incident. Who else was chaperoning? Are they being let go? Was, I heard Mr. Wengler was there, is he being let go? Were you there? Were you there? Oh, no, Coach, or A.D. Ziegler was there, is he being let go? Coach Sereno can't be. I don't think it's fair to put this all on Coach Sereno, and he's gonna bear the brunt of all this. And I think as taxpayers, we deserve an answer as to why he's being let go. And one more thing, and one more thing, coming from the elite St. Ed's program, I'm not here to slam St. Ed's, they have a great football program. I loved Coach Lombardo, I didn't like Coach Lombardo, but I loved him. Strongsville should do more to keep your players from transferring and going into St. Ed's, St. Ignatius. What are you doing? You want a more successful program? There's plenty of kids from that 2022 class. You guys could have been state champs. Joey Lavelle, Ashton Montgomery, Steven Bottomer, there's plenty of kids that you should have kept. How about the kids? I don't understand how, I was Catholic school 12 years, I wanted my kids to be Catholic school 12 years. It didn't work out financially, and for other reasons, for my son, but you need to do more. Those kids that are in your middle school, in your grade schools and in your middle schools, that go to St. Ed's or St. Ignatius, the only reason they're going there is for the sports, and for the football program, because they want to be successful on a football program. They could be successful here at Strongsville. Do more, do better. And I would like to know when we're gonna get some answers as to why Coach Sereno is being let go. I know it's, you're saying it's a bunch of stuff, but his, his record, his, you know, has he been evaluated? You do, as a business owner, I know you do evaluations on your employees, you give them warnings, you just don't let people go. So hopefully, as taxpayers, we will get some answers. Thank you for your time.
All right, I think we will, I know Dr. Reiba has prepared.
Tracy Van Roy, 16348 Acacia Drive, Strongsville, Ohio, and I am an educator as well, so thank you all for considering this. I am a proud mom of a 2023 graduate. My son Colin Van Roy is currently at Fordham University, he plays on the football team. His freshman year, he was not going to play football. He had extreme anxiety, was really intimidated by JD and Blake and all those big-name players. Well, the whole summer, he didn't go to any camps, practice, anything. The very first day of school, Sereno came up to him and said, you can join our team anytime, and I get a text at work, Mom, I'm joining football. That made me the happiest mother ever, and I was so happy to be with my football friends. And Colin received a full-ride scholarship to Fordham University in New York City. He left in July for camp, he came back for the first time for Thanksgiving, and he went up to SHS, and who do you think he went to see?
Pretty emotional right now. I've watched Coach Sereno, from the day that he got here, put his heart and soul into a program, starting from kindergarten and first grade, all the way through to the top, and I watched him follow every one of these kids through college and their path and their journey. And I gotta tell you, what he's done for this program, what I've seen from day one through even, even yesterday, from what I've heard going on in this building and the commitment that he continues to have, put the blood, sweat, and tears into this program, is unparalleled. I've watched him put together not just game plans for a game, but help outline blueprints for kids turning into adults, and helping them get through hard times in life, and get to optimize everything they do, that they do in their life, and prepare them for the real world. I think that, you know, football teams are measured by wins and losses. I think at the end of the day, when you look at each one of these individuals that, that he's coached and touched along the way, you'll be able to look at a win-loss record that has a zero in the loss column right there. And I think that if we don't seriously consider reversing this decision, it's gonna be a major loss for this community and this school district.
So on behalf of the school board and myself, I'd like to thank all of our parents, our students, our alumni, and community members that have come out tonight to share their thoughts and appreciation about their experiences for Coach Sereno. As I've shared in other communications and want to share again tonight, Coach Sereno has been a positive mentor to many, has increased participation in his program, has connected our city and youth program to the middle school and high school teams. As we've heard from many parents and other speakers tonight, he has relentless drive and passion to support our football program and our student athletes. However, the recent events and incident at the Pro Football Hall of Fame, and other concerns that came out, that arose throughout this 2023 season, gave me pause as we finished the season to consider the short and long-term impact of keeping Coach Sereno as our head football coach. We did take a lot of time. I took a lot of time, a month and a half, to complete a holistic review of the football program under his leadership, not just this year, not just for one incident, but over the past seven years, to determine the best course of action moving forward. As Nicole shared earlier, we listened to our high school administration, we had conversations with the board, and although I did not personally speak to players, I read their emails, I read your emails, and I read your thoughts and passion for what Coach Sereno has meant to you and to others, and I did not disagree. Some of you have suggested tonight that Coach Sereno should be given a second chance. However, based on the review, he's already been provided multiple chances to work within the guidelines, policies, and procedures that all of our Mustang coaches have to follow, no matter what sport they represent. I understand as a parent of athletes myself, and as you, wanting to know the details and the reasons as to why this decision was the reasons as to why this decision was made more specifically. As I shared with Coach Serrino, based on the respect I have for him as a colleague and as a coach and as a teacher, those personnel decisions and conversations will remain between him and I. At this time, the easy and comfortable and obviously popular decision would be to continue with Coach Serrino as our head coach. Yet when all factors are considered over his tenure, the decision that I made, the decision that I think is best in the future of our program and for our district, is to move forward with a new coach and move in a different direction. Again, I thank Coach Serrino for his years of service, and I appreciate all of you sharing your passion and admiration for the work that he's done.
That was pre-written. So like, this is just a question. I definitely just feel like, where are the checks and balances? So if, who's checking who? Because what's the difference if you make a recommendation, Dr. Ryba, to keep someone, okay? And then he goes to voting for the board? So then the board votes whether or not to keep them. So if they vote not to keep them, they're essentially overturning your decision. So what's the difference in this case? If the board gets to vote now based on your recommendation of no, but then decide yes, then it's fair, and at least these people who have listened to us tonight get the opinion too, beyond just you. Because right now, it feels super one-sided. And obviously, we know that you guys have had meetings behind closed doors and that you're allowed to do that legally. We understand, but we're not privy to that. So still sitting in our shoes right now, your response, although eloquent, doesn't, it doesn't help us feel any better, because it still feels like it's coming from one human. That's all.
I just want to make one more point, because I have been a member of a group of constituents in the last week who fell very passionately about the decision that you did make. We elect you.
Thank you.
To be our voice. Why aren't you hearing us?
Thank you.
I really hope you consider what we're saying.
It was a pre-written statement. Maybe listen to us.
Levies aside, what if I've just been a humanitarian? Listen to your community. We've asked you to be our voice because of the way our government is established. If you couldn't hear us and represent us, what good is the system?
Usually in a polarizing issue like this where people advise the community, where's the opposition?
I'd just like.
I'd love to read a pre-written statement after you just said.
I'd just like, just to summarize, to summarize, and so that, you know, we can move on with our board agenda.
Maybe go beyond the process and have your opinion known.
Mike, I would like to make a statement.
Thank you for the time.
I appreciate you guys being here. Dr. Ryba, he made a recommendation to the board, the board supports his recommendation.
It wasn't his decision.
All five of you? Just curious, all five? Yes?
Yo, here's the thing, guys, right? Let me stand up for a second. Does anybody here oppose any of this? Do you want to read all that? I want to say this, because the only opposition is there. Not here. I'm raising my voice because I want you guys to listen to the community. As I said, when I got up there and talked, the optics have changed. Things are different, you see this. Work your heart and take a few days and just talk about it. Things can change. Decisions can be overturned, it's okay. It would show on the news, in the state of Ohio, in the county of Cuyahoga, that you guys have the balls, the cool youngs, to change things.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I. I'm respectfully asking that you give us those days that you're telling us to take. Let us cease this now. Let us think. He's asking us to think about it. If you're asking us to think about it, you have to, you have to let us do it, right?
The only thing we're asking you to consider while you're up there is, this is, I'm not, we're not here for, for me, I'm not here for me. I'm here for my sons, my other son who's actually an orchestra project that I had to miss because of this.
Yes.
Okay? There's a lot of kids that couldn't come here tonight. So these people are here not for themselves, they're here for them, because we love them, like Coach Serrino loves them. And I just want you all to remember the fact that every single one of these parents standing here trusts you to make decisions for their kids and make the best decision for their children. This is not the right decision, because every single one of these kids is better off for knowing him. Every one of these kids is better off for having him in his life. This entire community is better off for him being here, just being a presence. And I want you all to remember that, because all of this means nothing if these kids can't learn that their voice can be heard and things can be overturned. You can go back and you can talk about this, because like they said, everybody in this room has a voice, because we live here. We live here. I want you to remember that this is for these kids. Everyone standing here, if you ask them their vote, they're saying we vote Lou Serrino to stay our head coach.
Again, we appreciate.
Can you give us a date that would work for you, that you could really, truly look at this and reconvene and get back to us?
You've asked us for a few days, we will give you a few days. We have a board agenda that we need to get to tonight. We need to move on.
Ms. Housen, if you will, can I just have one moment, please? Let me quit. So you said a few days, right? So for these next few days, I want you to listen, not only to your parents, but as a team captain and as a student of Lou Serrino. He's taught me for nine years what it's like to be a man growing up in this world, growing up, standing up for what I believe in. And I believe that every single person in this room, parents, kids, colleagues, coaches, every single person in here believes, except for you guys, that he should be reinstated. And you know what? We believe that because we spend every day, every night, every month, every year with him. We bleed for him, we sweat for him, we cry for him, we do everything for him. And I know you have children, I know Dr. Rapp has children, I know Mr. Mickle has children, and I know some of your children have been around Coach Serrino. And I want you to go home and ask them, what has Coach Serrino done around Strongsville High School? And they will only speak of positive impact. So I want you to reconsider that and reconsider what he has done for this football program, what he has done for this school, because you will only hear positive impact, nothing negative. The only negative thing is football, and wins and losses come and go as it was said. We all bleed Lou Serrino, Lou Serrino bleeds us. We love him, we're a family, we're a brother. He is like a father to every single person in this room, and anyone who disagrees with me, they're lying. So I want you to reconsider that. And Mr. Ryba, I want you to look at the crowd amongst me. There's parents, colleagues, coaches, students. Students and parents all wear Strongsville Mustang football gear because we all support Lou Serrino and think he needs his job back. It will not only be beneficial to us, but to you as well. I just hope that you will take these couple days to reconsider that and focus on the future, not only the past. So thank you.
All right, at this time, we are going to move on with our agenda.
Need a new school board, I need a vote.
Give me a superintendent.
We'll never find a coach before I do what he does.
We love Lou. We love Lou. We love Lou. We love Lou. We love Lou.
Okay, next on our agenda is approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes from November 9th, 2023. All district video and audio recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Agnastiu for the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hauslem. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first being the monthly financial report for the month ended November 30th, 2023. With that, I do have the monthly supplemental report that I go over, which kind of compares the month-end report to the five-year forecast. So to start, as you recall, I presented the forecast the last board meeting. With that, there hasn't been much changes to the forecast as of yet. Revenues are about 29,000, trending 29,000 through November, a little over budget, while expenditures are, yeah, favorable, while expenditures are 41,000, over budget in a grand scheme of an $86 million budget. It's nothing to be concerned about. Potential impact would be 11,000 different in cash to the five-year forecast. As mentioned, the forecast for this fiscal year, we would have an operating surplus of 2.5 million. Revenues in comparison to November, overall total revenues in comparison to November of this, this year compared to November of last year. Overall, total revenues for November is up by 13%, 130,000. The largest change in this November's revenue collected compared to November of '23 is higher investment earnings of 78,000 and higher refund of prior year expenditures of 25,000. Single months' results can be skewed compared to prior year because of timing of revenues received. The fiscal year-to-date results when involving additional months of revenue activity can provide more insight. And then when looking at fiscal year comparison, this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year, fiscal year-to-date general fund revenue collected totaled 41,000, 41,125,000 through November, which is 1.4 million or 3.6% higher than the amount collected last year. The largest difference in revenue comparing current year revenue collected through November to the same period of last year is investment earnings of 566,000, higher compared to the previous year, followed by state aid of 550,000. And additionally, we also had TIF revenues that were about 194,000, 92,000 of which were for out-of-court settlements through our attorney David Seed and Medicaid that we received of 221,000 that should have been received in last fiscal year that was a few months late that led into this fiscal year. And how does it compare to the forecast? As mentioned earlier, it's about 29,000 more compared to the forecast, which is some refunds of prior year expenses. Still have seven months to go through the fiscal year, so we'll continue to monitor each month and report out. Any questions on revenues before I go next managers? Expenditures for the month of November compared to last November are about $180,000 higher, or 2.6%. And the largest change is salary and benefits, which is about $386,000 higher. Same when comparing single month, it could be skewed to looking at a fiscal year-to-date. Comparing fiscal year-to-date revenues through last year to this year, it's about 1.9 million dollars or 5.7% higher compared to last year. And then comparing it to the previous year, it's about 14% higher. And then comparing to the forecast, it's trending to the forecast about $41,000 higher, about 0.05%. Any questions on the financial report? Moving on to the next item. Grant approvals. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following grants be approved for fiscal year '24. We had, in total, two SEF grants, one for Sora Elementary for stand-up desk schools and grants for Mr. Whittaker, who's in attendance here, for 1,200, 1,000, 1,280 dollars, and then for Kinsner, 500 dollars for the sign language club t-shirts. And then also, we received about 1,700 dollars from the Optimist Club to go help support, for the elementary school to support students in need, and then also at the middle school for the same to, for, to participate in participation fees and items for extracurricular activities. Item three, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the return of advances per the exhibit be approved. These were, if you recall, from last fiscal year, we had several grant advances that had negative fund balances. The general fund advances those dollars because they can't end the year negative. The grants are reimbursable, so we have to spend them, they request money back from the state. At the end of each fiscal year, that creates a lag, and we transfer operating dollar, or advanced operating dollars to those funds to cover the deficits until they're received. We do what's called final expenditure reports in September, and then in November, the state approves those final expenditure reports and get the dollars back. So now that we receive the dollars back, we're advancing those dollars back from those grants to the general fund. And that totaled 197,619.85. The last item, or the second to last item I have is the annual appropriation measure. There's two changes, one for the SEF grants that we received, the 1,780 dollars. The Optimist Funds, those were deposited in the '18 accounts at the schools' principals' account. There was enough budget to cover those. And then also, in the same '19 grant, we received E-rate reimbursements of 34,681 dollars, so increasing their budget by, for the refunds, for the reimbursements that were received. And then the last item, which requires a separate vote, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a resolution pursuant to section 5705.212 of the Revised Code submitting to the electors of Strongsville City School District the question of the renewal of an existing tax levy for the purpose of current expenses be approved.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stachek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any questions for discussion? George, I just wanted to, to ask, you had prepared a comparison of a half levy versus a full levy. Can you go over that for us?
Yeah, so there was questions asked about, what is a half levy? What if a half renewal compared to the full renewal, what impact to our financial situation? So first, I want to start with the five-year forecast that I presented last month. As you can see, in fiscal year '24, our revenues over expenditures are about 2.6 million. Then in 2025, we'll begin that deficit spend of 2.3 million. And then in 2026, five, deficit spend of 5.4 million. And what deficit spend means is the expenditures are higher than the revenues coming in. So taking that and kind of doing a simulation of what happens if we do a half, a half renewal, so starting in this template with, with the actual forecast that was presented in November, and then taking half the renewal, half the levy out, so the levy generates about nine, about nine point, about 9.8 million after the collection rate is applied. In total, so dividing that by two, it's about, half of that is about 4, 4.8, 4.9 million dollars. So reducing that out of the budget on an annual basis, in fiscal year '25, it's a half year, the way the calendar year overlaps with fiscal year. But anyways, reducing that out, it increases the, it reduces, one, the revenue, so it increases the deficit spend amount. Just kind of switching tabs to kind of, to highlight that, I just want to show the big picture before I got into the summary chart. So looking at the summary chart, this box up top, this is our full levy. If, if it was renewed, we would begin that deficit spend in fiscal year '25 with that 2.3 million, then in fiscal year '26, 5.4 million, fiscal year '27, 7.4, and fiscal year '28, 9.2. If the levy was reduced in half, that would increase that deficit spend by, in fiscal year '25, by 2.4 million, and then 4.9 million each year following. So in fiscal year '25, the deficit spend would be 4.7 million, then '26, 10.2, fiscal year '27, 12.3, and fiscal year '28, minus 14.4. So it accelerates that deficit spend each year. And then looking at the cash balance, this year, we're looking to, and this is the general fund, cash balance, the operating fund, about 48.6 million. Next year, if the renewal was in, in full, in full effect, we would have 46.3 million, 40.9, then '27, 33.5, and then in '28, 24.2. If it was reduced in half, the levy was reduced in half, in '25, the cash balance would go from 46 million to, to 43 million, then in '26, from 40 million to 33 million, '27, fiscal year '27, from 33 to 21, and then fiscal year, from 24 million to 7.2 million. So the overall accumulation to decrease in cash balance over the life of the forecast is about 17 million. And then another, when we developed that cash balance policy back in the spring, one of the items we looked at, having at least a minimum of 90 days cash on hand. So how does that look like now with a full levy versus what I just kind of went over with the cash balance of making it in half? So currently, for this year, we would end this year with 206, 206 days of cash on hand, and then 185, and then the fifth year of the forecast would be 87. So throughout the life of the five-year forecast, we would be in that range of, at least a minimum of 90 days cash on hand. A half levy, it would reduce the number of cash days each, each year, and then in fiscal year '27, with a full levy, we would have 124 days cash in, and with the half levy, we would be below that 90 days. It would drop it down to 79 days. And then in fiscal year '28, it would be 26 days cash on hand with that 7.2 million dollars cash balance. So making it half would just accelerate the, the financial cash balance of the district, and then it would also increase that gap of the, of the deficit spend. So what would happen is, we would have, one, come back to the voters. With a full levy, we would be able to extend the, the new money asked a little longer, a year or two longer, but it would also be less of a gap that we would have to close in order to, to close that gap. Because right now, it would create a gap bigger than what this current levy even generates. So.
Thank you, that, that helps.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'm just going to repeat what, some of the stuff I said the last time. Whenever I, as a board member, go to the voters for approval of a levy, I have a three-part test. First, the first part of that test is, is it needed? And I, I think, I don't want to spend too much time on, is it needed? If we don't have these funds, those, those of us who have been in the district for 10 years or more know what it's like to not have adequate funds to properly fund our students' education. So I, for me, it's clear that it's needed. The second part of the test is, is it reasonable? Because again, we have to be reasonable with our taxpayers that we understand paying taxes for the schools is just part of the overall burden. And I think by definition, a renewal levy is reasonable. If we were having a conversation about a new money levy, you know, there's always arguments and different, different ways to think about it, and, you know, we, we could argue that we would need a 10-mil levy, or a 15-mil levy, or what have you. But that's a different conversation for a different time. This is a renewal. The taxes are the same taxes that we are paying currently. Not only is it the same, but because of House Bill 920, it's not an increase. Although inflation, although house values, although everything else increases, by law, the amount of money we will collect if this levy is renewed is the same that it collected back in 2019. The other part of reasonable for me is reacting or reflecting on what is the personality and the style of our voting taxpayers? And we go back to the last time prior 2019, the community increased the funding to the schools was in 2007. And so the amount that we chose to ask for support from the voters was chosen so that we can live off of the money that we receive, that we're stewards of, for a long period of time. Because the personality of our voters is, is they don't want to have to consider additional increases every three years, every five years. They want, just like any business owner, just like anyone else, they want some kind of steady, even keel. They want to know that if I budget for my taxes, the same way I budget for my mortgage payments or what have you, I'm not going to have any surprises. And so previous boards and this board have responded to that and said, if that's how our customers want us to treat them, we're going to be reasonable, and we're going to find a millage level that will let us live, might be a poor choice of words, but will let us live within our means for that period of time. And so the consequence of that is, when we do our job well in school funding, we develop a large cash balance, and then we get to a zenith, and then it comes down. And George has done a great job of explaining that cash balance over and over again. We have the community with our finance committee that helps us say what is wise with that cash balance. And so I think it's, I think it's double reasonable for the renewal. As George's spreadsheet pointed out, to reduce the amount simply means that that cash balance needs to be replenished sooner. So it sounds really attractive, have it. But what that half means is that much sooner, we're going to have to double the, the money we come back for. And, you know, other districts might be able to do that, you know, in a theoretical world, we would come every year to the voter and ask, this is what we need, we want your support. But the voter will get tired of a new money levy every single year. And so when we did the 20, the 2019 levy, we committed to eight years. Renewal puts us on track for 10 years, and I think that's respectful to the voter. But coming back, I think it's reasonable. And although half sounds attractive, it's, it's in, there is no rationale from a financial standpoint to say to the voter, we're going to, we're going to ask for half. And by the way, in a couple of years, we're going to have to ask for it back again. I want to be honest with our voters, and to me, that just smacks of trying to trick them. We'll get that half now, but we're going to run out of money faster, and now I'm going to ask for double. If I was in the other person's shoes, I'd be like, you know, who, what game are you trying to play? And so in my mind, the will of the voter should respond to wise financial planning. So I come back to, I think it's reasonable. And the last part for my test is, can I look the voter, can I look the taxpayer in the eye and say, we won't waste your money? Because if, of all the things you should be angry about, it would be wasting your money. And every decision we make has that consideration. How do we make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck, for the taxpayers' dollars? I promise it, that's, that's my promise to, to our constituents, but don't take my words for it, don't take anyone's word for it. Look at what we do, look at our finances. And instead of saying the Willie Sutton, why do I rob banks? Because that's where the money is. Instead of saying, oh, look at this big budget, say, they're not going to be tempted to waste that money, they're going to make that budget last as long as possible. So for me, it passes all three parts of my test, so I can support this at the existing level. And I, and any other suggestion to me is just penny wise, pound foolish, and ultimately is not wise. And then the last thing I wanted to share is, you know, the Strongsville GOP put out an email, and there's a gentleman by the name of Jack Boyle, who heads, he is the executive director of the Ohio Tax Reform Group, and he had an article about the issues that we're dealing with right now. And as executive director of Americans for Prosperity, he wants to lower taxes. And so that's why he came out with this article against our levy. He lives in Solon. I think everybody wants to lower their taxes, so I have a direct suggestion to Jack Boyle, move to Strongsville, because the tax rate in Solon is higher than the tax rate in Strongsville. So if you want to save money, come to Strongsville and see how well we will stretch every single dollar you entrust to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Birch, very well stated.
Just a quick question. I think I read it somewhere in my thing, and I can't find it. What would be the difference, half levy, full levy, in someone's taxes? I think you, you wrote it out somewhere, and it made a lot of sense to me. I mean, when you really look at it, it's like.
So it's, the full levy, it's 170, so I put the chart on the, on the whiteboard. The full levy, the amount of tax on a $100,000 house is $179. Half of that would be a savings of $89.52. The full levy amounts to about 49 cents a day. The half levy amounts half of it to 25 cents a day. So it would be a savings of 89, 89 dollars per 100,000 valuation or 25 cents a day.
Thanks, George. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, can you take the roll?
Ms., Ms. Stochuk?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hauslem?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, George.
And with that, with that, if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. I'll turn it over to Dr. Iba for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hauslem. Under my report, I have a couple items for discussion. The first is district substitute guidelines, so I'm going to turn it over to our assistant superintendent Jenny Pelco to give us some background and overview, and then we'll discuss with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Iba. So just a little background in terms of having parents substitute in our district. Early this year, I sent out a communication to the parents that were currently subbing in our district, primarily our, at the elementary level, that it's not our practice to have them sub in their, in the buildings in which their children attend. And so let me just give a little bit background on that. Prior to the pandemic, this was our practice, and we were seeing our sub rate fill rates in the 90% every single day. I would say probably 96% on average, which is a really, really good fill rate. And so, you know, this was the practice that we did not have parents subbing at the elementary level, typically because there, you know, on any given day, when you're a substitute, there's a lot of confidential information, whether you're observing children in the classroom, looking at their assessments that they're taking, from IEP information, 504 information, a lot of different things that are confidential. And, you know, due to the size of the building and the fact that they would be subbing in a classroom or a classroom where maybe their friends' children were as well, it's really difficult when you're in that position and you go home, or you're in the neighborhood, and somebody comes up to you and says, so tell me about the day, and what happened? And, you know, just puts them in a bad spot to not, not to share anything, or even to know kind of what can I share and what I, what I should and shouldn't share. And so we've had situations like that, where we've had either family members, friends of family members that have shared information that I've had to address in, in my career here as assistant superintendent. However, you know, during COVID, the, the rules changed for subs, and we were, you know, we needed subs, we needed people to, to be in the building, so we were more flexible on that rule, and had, you know, parents subbing in our buildings. And if you recall, you've approved that, you know, you don't need a bachelor's degree even now to sub in, in our buildings. And so we've been, we were lenient on that. However, like I said, recently, we've had some issues with confidentiality again come up, and so therefore, I put out the communication for parents that they would not sub at the elementary level. Secondary level's a little different, due to the size of the building and the different classes, it's, we can, we can place subs that are parents in different classrooms or different areas. So, you know, even though I put out the communication, we still have a kind of a tiered system that we follow. So what that means is, we do still have parents subbing in their elementary buildings that are maybe monitors or work in the cafeteria, where that confidential information isn't as prevalent, and we do have that going on. We also have instituted a rule, just because we still are living in the sub shortage world, that if we cannot find a sub at the elementary level, then within 24 hours, we will reach out, and we do have some that are taking advantage of that and, and doing that within the 24-hour rule, just so we can get these classes covered. And so another thing that I put into place was to have all of our substitutes take a confidentiality course through our Public School Works and our, our system, online system, where there's modules that they can learn more about why confidentiality is so important. And so I just want to give you a little bit of data. I did the, looked at all of our substitutes at the elementary level. There were 14 of them total that subbed during the '22, '23 school year, and so we kind of looked at what happened then with them after I sent this communication and what's going on. And so in terms of that, five substitutes subbed sparingly, if at all, this year. But out of that five, the previous year, only four of them subbed less than 22 days. So they weren't really subbing that much to begin with, and it was primarily in their own child's school, but we didn't use them very often, they didn't sign up very often. One took a position elsewhere out of that 14, one was hired as an aide by us. Four are still subbing for us regularly, even outside of their child's building. Two have taken positions as monitors, and because I believe they do have a, a teaching license or are still able to sub, they'll sub outside of their monitor hours and help us out. And then one was hired as a long-term sub at Chapman, and her child's homeschool is Whitney. So again, just anecdotally, talking to the ladies in my office that are really in charge of this each and every day and placing subs, you know, it really hasn't had an impact on, on our department too much. You know, there was one that we had that would have maybe taken a long term in a building where her child was, so we weren't able to do that, but that was probably the one that, you know, bothered us a little bit, but beyond that, it really hasn't had an impact. You know, just subs in general are hard to find right now, especially in, in high school classes, where we're looking for science, or, or specific things, and it's just not here, it's everywhere. We're all dealing with it as, as districts, and, and doing our best day to day to fill absences.
And so, as we put back this procedure this year, I know some of the board members had questions, we've shared this update with them, and so Ms. Housen, we'll turn it back over to you, if there's any other questions, feedback, or guidance from the board on this topic of our elementary substitute procedures.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I'm surprised there's a, I mean, I've heard some complaints about, you know, parents that were at different schools. Seems like I heard more than like what's up there, but you know the numbers better than me. I'm just wondering, like, is there like a contract? Well, you said they, they watch stuff. I know that there's also a rule, like when you're desperate, it's within twenty-four hours, and then, like, you call them, you know, and it just seems kind of unfair to the people that are willing to do that. You know, it just seems like, well, we don't trust you, but if we can't find anybody else, we'll, we'll put you in. And I know that's not what you're saying, but I think sometimes that's what they're hearing.
Sure.
So I'm just wondering if there's like another way, like, is there like a contract they could sign, or something? I mean, they're adults, if we have them at any school, we should trust them. You know, that's my view of it, you know? I, I'm sure it does get sticky, people say things, or you, there's rumors, or you hear things. But I just don't want to insult anyone, because I think it is really hard to find these people. And if they're willing, you know, I mean, one person said to me, you know, they had a good rapport where they were at, and then they, they couldn't go back. So, you know, I'm just wondering if there's some way that, you know, we could help them out, and not seem like we were taking advantage of them, like, well, we can't find anybody, so you can come now, you know? That's all.
I was just gonna say, I support this policy, and I was worried, as you said, Sharon, like, what are the numbers here? Like, how many? And I do appreciate what you said about, like, well, we'll use you in an emergency. So if there is a solution to that, Jenny, that, some creative way to address that, I would certainly be open to that, because I get the message that, you know, we might inadvertently be sending. But even, so as a parent with elementary kids, even if all the confidentiality rules are kept, right, even if that person doesn't say anything, doesn't talk, like, they follow all the things, but I'm their neighbor, and I know they were in my kid's classroom, I no longer have the right to choose whether or not I shared medical information about my child with my neighbor. The school did that for me. And that's where I get stuck. Like, even if they don't share anything, if I know that they know now my child's medical diagnosis, their IEP or their 504, that makes me uncomfortable. And so this is one of the reasons, there are others, but that's the main reason, because even if we're being the upstanding citizens, there's the potential to create conflict in neighborhoods and school groups by having people privy to information of other parents and their community's kids, especially when you're in an elementary that's based on, like, the small community elementaries, right? The problem gets less potent as they mix with more and more kids. So I just wanted to offer that as a perspective of, like, hey, we're not saying people aren't, you know, I'm not saying people aren't keeping their confidence, I'm saying even if they do, it still makes me really uncomfortable as a parent.
Is there a lot of people that complain? I mean, has there been like complaint, has there been like fights in neighborhoods over this, or? I mean, I don't know, they called you up and said like mine, you know what I mean? Like, do you hear those complaints?
Yes, I do. I mean, I, and it's not, it's not just parents, I don't want to put parents of, of children as the main culprit, but there have been, you know, situations that my, my friends, sisters, friends subbed, and it got back to me that she shared X, Y, and Z about my child. So it's not just parents, and I, I would say that doesn't happen often. But, you know, my, my procedure is that if we do get a complaint about a substitute, you know, we're trying to give grace to some of these people that come in cold and have no idea how to, how to manage a, you know, math class, and don't know the kids, and we give a little grace, but, you know, they make mistakes. And so my, my procedure is if we get a complaint, I will call the sub personally and discuss it with them, and give them some corrective action, please don't do this, or, you know, here's some guidance on this. And so, you know, typically that works, and, or if it doesn't, then I dismiss them, if it's, if they're not following the directive. So, you know, I, I do have that in place, but I do hear what you're saying, the twenty-four hour world, rule, you know, but again, I can look at that, most of our subs are picking things up if they know it's a couple days, and they may pick it up a week, but many are picking up, you know, twenty-four to forty-eight hours before the, the assignment. Or, you know, when, when teachers do put it in that morning, or late at night, that's when they're picked, so it is less than twenty-four hours typically. But it would be nice to know before I get that call at seven AM.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that feedback, and Jenny will loop back through my updates or other pathways to, to share any reflections or different steps moving forward. The next item on the, the next discussion item is about PBIS and SEL. The, the board has shared that this is an area of focus for them this year, and so as George, as George has up here, we've kind of taken a look at the current state, and the board members throughout the past months have submitted a variety of questions that they have, based on what is currently happening in the district with PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and SEL, Social Emotional Learning. We've gathered all those questions. Andy Trujillo, our, our director of student services, as well as Jenny and some others, have worked on those answers that are below there, and the board has had a time to review those. One of the things, the, the focus of the discussion tonight is to look at that last column, which is the desired state. Where do, as a board, where do we want to be with PBIS and SEL? What do we believe to be successful implementation, implementation of this in our district? And so what we're asking is for the board to give us feedback on kind of the guardrails. Where do you want us to go? What are some things you want us to look at? And then that middle column, that action steps, that's the job of our team, to figure out, well, how do we make this a reality, or how do we give a feedback loop to the board to say, this may not be realistic right now, but maybe in the future? So, just to kind of get ideas going, there were some ideas that were already stated there, the, that would be when we offer same equitable experiences across all buildings in the district. When we have data identifying students that need supports, and that would be a part of it. And then, you know, we have a, the environment where all kids could succeed and, and grow. So when you take a look at this, you know, desired state, you can think of equity, right, is that staffing levels, is that experience, is that, do we want to see resources more readily available for families? Do we want to see services and supports that we currently don't have in our district in place? So I'm gonna stop there, but those are just some ideas of desired states. So, Ms. Housen, I'll turn it back over to you, to, to see if the board has any additional, in addition to these three, that they'd like to add to the list for us to consider.
All right, hopefully everybody had time to look at this beforehand. Questions or comments?
I have a list, I was just being patient. You win, you guys. I can, I, there's only five.
Okay.
I can either do them all at once, or Rich and I can play tag over here, so. Just, these are a couple things that directly came out of the answers to the questions. So, one is with the website, one of, like, one of the answers was, it's not updated on the website. Can we, I mean, it sounds simple, but can we keep that current at all times, especially as it relates to this? And secondly, can we get some more of the resources up on the website? So if I search Carrie Jankar, I'd hope something pops up, right? Like, can we, can we get some more of this information out there? Some of it's just access. So that's one. Two, there's a waiting list, that, then this data is old at this point, a couple weeks, but there were ten people waiting for mindfully services at the high school. Do we need more people? And I know they're working on it, Carrie Jankar's hiring a new person, I know, but I'd love to have more than enough that we don't have to have a waiting list, because there's a waiting list everywhere in the world. This might be the only place that kids can access this care in the immediate. One of the other answers was, I, I, there was a question about, where, how does the social worker fit in here? And, and the answer was generally in tier two and tier three in interactions, interventions. My question is, is there a place for, and does it require more social workers, then is the side comment? But for tho, the social worker to be active in tier one. I feel like every kid can benefit from the knowledge and wisdom that a social worker has, and their guidance as they're leading a group of people who are dealing with the kids on an everyday basis. I sure would love to have the teachers have access to a social worker, and the kids have access to a social worker, all the kids, not just some kids. The, the middle school, there was a question about restorative practices. The middle school has them, the high school doesn't. I'd like to see that align, or work towards it, you know, I don't know what exactly it would look like, but I was put off a little that one has it and one doesn't. And let's see. The last one isn't directly related to SEL, but I'm wondering if, and we've discussed this before, when we first had the conversation with Andy, there was a lot of push to just slap bodies on the rules, right? But I find myself asking the same question, again, of, do we have enough monitors? Do we have enough teachers? Do we have enough counselors, social workers, right? Because if you drop the numbers of the students, per ratio, the ratio of student to adult, does that allow for more of the relationship creation? Like what we heard here tonight, he, you know, Lou coaches a hundred and twenty kids, and he can have that relationship, but when these, when you're seeing, you know, exponentially more kids every day, the opportunity to build relationships that might have an impact goes down. So even if they're not trained in anything, you know, they're not trained in mental health, they're not trained in counseling, but just having more adults per student, does that take some of the pressure off the rest of it? You know, like, I know right now at the middle school, there's classrooms that have almost forty students in them. Like, if we can get that number down closer to thirty, what does that do to the classroom setting, and the stresses on the teacher and on the students, right? So that's just a general question, like, is it just a matter of bodies? In all areas, not one specifically? That's my list, Rich.
Are you saying monitors?
All things, like, do we need more monitors? Do we need more teachers? Do we need more, just to bring the ratios down, so it's a more manageable number for the students and the teachers? And the counselors, so that they're not managing five hundred students at the middle school, or, you know, bus drivers, if they're managing overflowing buses, like, does it, do all of those need just more bodies?
So, the lens I was looking at, particularly with PBIS, I was curious on, our PBIS program is a reboot from, I believe it was twenty thirteen, when we did PBIS, so we're rebooting it. And this is a common refrain for me, but what time period are we looking at, and how are we gonna measure it? The, my take on PBIS is it's a longer word, with a shorter acronym, for dealing with discipline. And so when I was reading about restorative justice, it talked about how in the past, you know, restore, justice in school, you know, the principal could use a paddle. And now we know, you know, we know better, so we do better. But at some level, it's about managing discipline in a more enlightened, a more positive way. We're doing a lot of data, we're collecting a lot of data. If it works, the amount of discipline we need to do, or the amount of time that we engage in, all of those issues should go down. If it doesn't, then we, you know, I, and I, I know we need to do a honest amount of time, but if it's not working, whether it's a year from now, or two years from now, or three years from now, what mechanism do we have in place to say, hey, for whatever reason, it's not delivering the results we want? Everybody spent a lot of time, you know, the easy, the easy pot shot is, PBIS is just prizes. We're just gonna have prizes so that kids do, you know, that kids, when they're doing something bad, we're gonna redirect them, and if they do good things, we're gonna give them prizes. That's a really wide brush, and I don't agree with it. However, there is that component of it, and if it's not working, we have to say, I think we have to be practical and say, regardless of whether our intentions were good, kids today don't want a gift certificate, or a gold coin, or a whatever, et cetera. And whether it's a year or two years, but I don't want to be in a position where, in four years, we're committed to all of this, and we're more focused on collecting the data, and how many, you know, every kid has to get some kind of prize, and that's a bad thing. But a lot of our, we're blessed in Strongsville, a lot of our kids don't need this, and/or get this in a different fashion. And so I just want to make sure we have that dimension of balance, of saying, you know, how do we, how do we do this well, so that it accomplishes the goal? And the goal is that our kids, regardless of what their background is, are, are able to be successful. Hopefully that resonates a little bit.
Is it required, though, by the state, right?
It is, correct.
PBIS, so we can't just say...
We can't just say we're not going to do it.
Yeah, we can't just like throw it out, but...
But we can determine how we do it. We can say, you know, we, we have to collect the data, but it's up to us to make the rules. And I always, I'm always big on, if the adults in the room are the ones that make the rules, spend some time thinking about, is it gonna work?
Well, I think frustrate, oh, I'm sorry, Laura, were you gonna talk? I think frustration with some people, what I've heard is, they don't know what the discipline really is. It's like, somebody can do something like, I don't know, forget their pen, I'm just using this. And, but then if they remember their pen, the next day, they get like a candy bar. But somebody does something else, and they have a detention. So I think a lot of people are confused, like, where are the boundaries, like, what are we reprimanding, and what aren't we? And what are the consequences for those? And there's also a lot of people who are like, I don't want my kids to get a candy bar, because they pay attention. They should pay attention, you know? So then you have that camp, too, and I, I tend to agree with them. You know, if by sixteen, seventeen years old, you can't sit in your class and pay attention, then maybe, you know, you need more help, but maybe not a candy bar, or a sticker, or whatever. You know, I think people look at it like, we're, we're putting this money in, like, now PTA is trying to fund it, and the people quite frankly resent it. They're like, but my kids don't use this, or they don't need it, or I don't like it. So, I think if they, if, and I think it's a hard thing, like, we can all say, oh, we should just come up with this, but I think it has to be like consistent across the board, like for high school, or age appropriate, and then probably elementary school, although every school is a little bit different in their culture and character, so you kind of tend to have to leave that, but sort of have those guidelines. Because I think people are just like, parents are frustrated, like, and then I'm sure the principals and the teachers hear the complaints, like, well, why did my child get a detention, or why did they get a candy bar? You know? I, I think it just needs to be more clarified, like in the good old days, like, he didn't get a candy bar.
Well, I appreciate that discussion and the feedback, and that, that's extremely helpful, that gives us a good starting, good foothold to, to move forward and continue the discussion. I just want to make sure everybody, anything else on anybody's list that they wanted to share? Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving forward to business services, there are a couple items for your consideration. First of all, be resolved upon my recommendation that the school bus transfer, that school bus transportation for the students listed be declared impractical for the time, distance required to provide transportation, the cost, in terms of the equipment, maintenance, personnel, and administration, and the additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules. Be further resolved upon... Be further resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education, uh, in lieu of providing transportation pays parents of students attending, uh, Saint Bartholomew's School, uh, the reimbursement shall be based on the amount allotted by the state. Secondly, uh, we talked about a couple meetings ago, radios for buses, digital radios, Mr. Brechner was here, he talked about the, what a safety enhancement it is to have digital, that we, uh, can now communicate throughout all of the district. He also gave you a preview that, uh, using additional dollars we had in our safety grant, that he would be looking to recommend radios for all of our buildings, uh, so we would be completely on a digital, uh, network. So, be resolved upon the rec- my recommendation that the Board of Education approves the purchase of radios from B and C Communications for all elementary buildings, the preschool, the high school and the middle school. The individual quotes represent the breakdown by building, the total not to exceed two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. The purchase falls under the sole source provision of both the board policy and federal grant guidelines due to the compatibility of the devices to the established infrastructure. What that means is we've got a bunch of this stuff already and we're gonna keep using that stuff moving forward, uh, and there's some exceptions in the policy to allow us to do that. So the purchase is also a part of the Sourcewell Consortium. Uh, the funds are provided by the K to twelve safety grant. Any questions there?
No, Doc, I think because of the amount.
Well, I apologize, it's an action item.
So I need a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchuk, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Thank you for explaining. Any questions or comments?
Can you just remind me, why are they so important? I remember when they talked about them and I can't, like, don't they do something different?
Yes, so, right now with the analog radios we have, they only have a bandwidth, a distance that they can travel.
Okay.
So we can't go across the city. So now, like if you have a radio at the middle school, i- it probably won't reach here, right?
Okay.
So this radio now, you will be able to communicate anywhere in the district. Uh, so from a safe, I mean, that's just good practice anyway, but from a safety perspective, we now don't have to worry about what zone are you in or where are you at? Uh, and so it doesn't, you know, it allows us to communicate throughout the entire district instantaneously.
Thanks for reminding me.
Yeah.
Okay.
George, can you take the role?
Just, just a few other comments. If you imagine in an emergency, you know, if telephone lines are down, if cell lines are down, et cetera, this is an alternate way, uh, for staff and, and, and connected to the city, safety forces to be able to communicate in an emergency. So I think it's a good thing and I don't know if it, if it was highlighted well enough before, but this is a safety grant, so, uh, thanks to Steve and his team and George, uh, this does not affect the general fund. So it's a good thing to purchase for safety and all of that, but it also, uh, is financially prudent.
Thank you. George, can you take the role?
Ms. Stavchuk?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, uh, is a recommendation for additional cameras. Be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education approves the purchase of additional cameras from Southeast Security for the total cost not to exceed seventy-one thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Uh, funds for this will predominantly come from the safety grants, uh, and a small portion may come from the permanent improvement grant.
And because of the amount again, we need a vote, separate vote? Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
George, can you just explain, I know we want to exhaust all dollars, why we have these two account items up there?
Yeah, so, um, with the remaining funds of the safety grant, um, we got a, drawing a blank off hand, we got a certain dollar amount of safety grants, um, and this last purchase will, um, exhaust all the funds. So, Mr. Brechner, our decision to make was either, one, buy, um, less items and leave, in turn, in turn back some safety dollars, or buy the remaining pieces and just use some district dollars to fully utilize the remaining piece of the, um, uh, of the safety grant. So as Cameron said, it's a nominal amount, I just can't remember offhand what it is, I think it's a few thousand dollars, um, of that total of seventy-one thousand.
And so this will provide, uh, we had a large camera project at the elementary and preschool this summer. This will provide additional cameras, uh, some cameras for storage, uh, replacement cameras as we go through, as well as some additional cameras at the middle school and high school.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, uh, this is, uh, se- security cameras are something that I manage at my place of employment and I did compare the pricing and we do have, uh, good pricing, uh, actually a little less than, uh, I would have been able to acquire them, uh, for my own workplace. So, that's a good thing, saving some dollars.
George, can you take the role?
Ms. Stavchuk?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to curriculum, there's three, four items for your consideration. The first, uh, is be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with the McKean Education Group, uh, in the amount of fourteen thousand, ninety-four dollars and fifty-seven cents for one part-time Title One instructor to serve as pupils, uh, attending Holy Family School under Title One Federal Funding, administered and approved for non-public schools by local districts. Number two, uh, be resolved upon my recommendation that the memorandum of understanding between Cleveland State University and Strongsville City School District be approved as presented. This is an agreement that allows student teachers from Cleveland State to be placed in our district. Number three, uh, be resolved upon my recommendation that the following student teachers be placed at Strongsville High School and Surar Elementary School. Uh, both of those placements will happen, uh, after the first of the year. And finally, we do have one overnight trip, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Wrestling Team to travel to Perrysburg, Ohio to participate in the Perrysburg Invitational Tournament, January fifth through sixth, uh, twenty twenty-four. Transportation will be via school bus and expenses will be paid by the Mustang Wrestling Club and Strongsville Athletic Boosters. Any questions under curriculum? With that, I'll turn it over to Jenny for the Human Resource Report.
Thank you. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Um, we have the retirements of non-certificated staff. We have the appointment of a leadership staff member and Melissa, I think is back there, at her very first meeting with us. Uh, so, uh, she, she came to a good one. So congratulations to Melissa and, uh, she will be taking over for Dawn, um, pretty, pretty shortly, but she's being trained and Dawn, Dawn gives her thumbs up, right?
And I will, I will say, uh.
Go ahead, George.
I'll just do it at the end of the meeting. I was gonna say, uh, this is Dawn's last board meeting. She's been coming to board meetings, consistently taking the minutes, the. Since, uh, what is it, two thousand and five, close to twenty years?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we'll formally recognize. We'll formally recognize Dawn at the May meeting.
Yeah.
This is her last meeting over the last twenty years, so.
Thank you, Dawn. Enjoy your every other Thursday evening.
And we're excited to have you.
And welcome, Melissa. We look forward to hanging out with you every other Thursday.
Dawn, it is a public meeting, this doesn't have to be your last meeting.
That was a very quick laugh back there.
All right, under three, we have appointments for non-certificated staff. Four, appointments for, for certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Under five, appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Under six, we have appointments for game workers. Seven, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Under eight, change in status for non-certificated staff. Under nine, stipends for our auditorium stage crew. Under ten, leave of absence for leadership staff. Under eleven, leave of absence for certificated staff. Twelve, leave of absence for non-certificated staff. Thirteen, unpaid leaves for non-certificated staff. And finally, fourteen, we have volunteers, uh, coaches. And that concludes my report.
There are no under, items under technology, so that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Ivan. Next up, we have a report on Polaris Career Center. Michelle?
Yes, um, just a couple of things of note, we had a special meeting last week or the week before, uh, in order to, uh, vote to accept the grant dollars that are being given to Polaris to build the new, like automotive robotics center, uh, to get that down to Columbus in time. So we did take care of that, it was a solid five-minute meeting. Um, so we got that done, our next regular meeting is next, um, Tuesday, where they do a really lovely dinner for the board, so we get to have some social time, get to know one another. And I'm really excited that Laura's gonna be joining me at that and she'll be serving a one-year term, um, to represent Strongsville along with me next year. Um, so that's coming up Tuesday. And then, just wanted to share, if you want to take a look at Facebook or Twitter, social media, you'll find pictures. They had the first week, Tuesday, Wednesday of the Explorer Club, so that's for fourth through sixth grade. From what I can tell, it was a great success. And based on the pictures and kind of being out in the community, we had a great turnout from Strongsville. So I, I'm glad for the students that have been able to take part in that and, um, hopefully we can get a chance to share some of the things. I saw some end tables they built with, they, they had their own names carved in them. We got some gingerbread houses at home, so they're doing a lot of great things. So, thank you to Polaris for offering that and, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Report on legislation, Rich.
Just one quick update, uh, House, Senate Bill Seventeen has been passed by both the Senate and it's waiting, it's, I'm sorry, it's been passed by the Senate, it's currently, uh, waiting to be passed. I was, I assume it will be passed by the House and then it'll be sent to the governor. And it is, um, the title is Add Capitalism to High School Financial Literacy Standards. So that'll be standards from K through twelve and it will, uh, the standards are, I don't want to say dated, but they probably need a refresher, so it'll be a welcome addition. And the, the law, the new law has no financial impact, it will just require us to revisit those standards and make sure that free market capitalism is part of the things that we teach, uh, under, under financial literacy. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Board Liaison Reports, City Council.
City Council met on Monday and one of the things that, uh, they had for their legislation was the second reading for two TIFs, uh, one for Chi- Chifalos and it escapes me what the other one is for, but they're both for, uh, construction projects in the city. Uh, TIF financing is a vehicle to, uh, help incentivize businesses to grow, expand, uh, retain employees. So if you've been by, uh, Pearl Road, the Chifalos, uh, car repair, that, uh, that new facility, part of the TIF will go for various improvements to the roads and the sidewalks and sewage, et cetera. And the mechanics of it is that the property tax that the business would pay when that increase occur, increase occurs is, uh, accounted for and that, that money can go to build whatever the, uh, improvements are. Um, so that's the report to the community. The part that I want to thank City Council and our city for is they're always cognizant of consequences that their legislation may have for the school district. And so they have a longstanding policy and a promise that whenever these TIFs come for consideration, under normal circumstances, if they did nothing, the school district would lose tax revenue. But they specifically say we will hold the school district harmless and that whatever that increase is in the property taxes, the school district will receive it. And I know George can, uh, attest to the fact that, uh, that happens every single time. So, I did want to make sure to let the community know that that's part of the partnership between the city and the school district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Yeah, the one thing I'll add, as I mentioned it, with the TIF revenue, that's where the TIF revenue comes from. So it's a separate line item that we have to account for, the city keeps this whole, it just comes in a different bucket than from property taxes and TIF line. And then the, it's a part of which, Rich said, um, the city's increase goes into a capital improvement fund, as well as the county, the county's piece, the county gives up their piece, that allows the city to do these infrastructures in the areas where these businesses are.
Thank you. Strongsville Education Foundation, Sharon?
Uh, the Strongsville Education Foundation, their meeting is next week, um, so I guess I'll report on that in January, they had their big fundraiser and I think Laura, you said they raised like.
Over twenty thousand dollars.
Over twenty thousand dollars, so, thanks to everyone who joined them and came and I'm sure they'll have more things in the new year to ask you all about. So thank you. That concludes.
Thank you. Strongsville PTA Council.
Uh, the Strongsville PTA Council had a luncheon today, which was great. And, uh, at their meeting, they talked about Founder's Day and ways that they were maybe gonna change it, make it a little more elaborate. Uh, the date is tentatively, uh, February twentieth. Uh, they also had their fundraiser, uh, with that neo-extreme sport games. And they said they got about a hundred kids, which was good, cause it was the same night as the chamber dance, I think. So, and they said it went smooth, the kids had a great time and, uh, they were really pleased with it. And then, um, we had Vicki Maloney, I think her name is, talk about, uh, the money that was the grants that were given out. Uh, the PTA gave out seven thousand dollars worth of grants this year and every single school got something. So I think that's quite a feat for them. And, other than that, we convene after Christmas and I'm sure there'll be more to come. That concludes.
Thank you. Next, Board Committee Reports, Finance Committee.
Uh, meet, next meeting's to be determined.
Thank you. And Policy Committee?
Ditto.
Great. Facilities Committee, our next meeting is December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty PM here in the Administration Building. Business Advisory Committee?
Our next meeting is February ninth, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty AM right here.
Thank you. Next, we have the Adoption of Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of consent calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denote, denoted as type dash action consent, which items constitute the, constitute the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or the superintendent requests that such items be removed from the consent calendar and voted upon separately. Do we have anything to remove? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stavchuk, second by Mrs. Kilbane. George, can you take the role?
Ms. Stavchuk?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Motion passes. And next, we have Superintendent's timely information.
Thank you, Mrs. Housen, I problem, promised this time there's no games, there's no contests, so just a few, uh, items that we want to highlight across the district that have been going on since our last meeting. First of all, the elementary level, we want to travel over to Chapman Elementary School. Mrs. Nozam, our gifted intervention specialist there, uh, had a technology and engineering challenge for her third through fifth graders. So, uh, she, the design challenge with the fifth graders was, hey, at this age, most kids don't have cell phones, so how, you can't text, so how do you give messages to your friends? The challenge was design a vehicle that will carry a note, a half a sheet of paper as far as possible on one puff of breath, using only ten items in twenty-five minutes. And so you can see some pictures there and some, uh, great designs, uh, by our young students there. Third and fourth grade, uh, scenario, um, they had to design a structure that it was at least twenty-four inches tall and can safely support a stuffed animal for ten seconds. Uh, third graders were able to use a hundred toothpicks and fifty mini marshmallows, where the fourth graders can use a hundred index cards and, uh, some, uh, cellophane tape. Uh, and to see all the creativity they could have to, to make that design challenge. At our PTA luncheon today, we had a little tower building challenge and the adults did not fare so well. So hopefully our third and fourth graders at Chapman found some success. Uh, moving on to the middle school, last Friday, almost a week ago, we had a great, uh, uh, recognition leadership breakfast, uh, for a variety of students, um, where thirteen business and community leaders were there. Uh, we, it was great to have, uh, guest speaker Jason Tresnick come in and share with the kids his journey, uh, and experience, uh, through, uh, the NFL and, uh, you know, his, his business here in Strongsville now. And we also had a special guest, uh, no, we didn't. Somebody's son, Fritz Miko, did a phenomenal job. It was a new addition that they brought to the program, uh, to have a high school senior come, or student come and share their leadership experience, um, and it was a great leadership lesson and, uh, he made me proud and I know he made Robin and his dad proud as well. So, in this format, as you can see in the pictures, kids are at tables with community leaders, business leaders, uh, Jenny and I had the opportunity to be there and they do some speed networking. So, they have a set of questions, they'll ask them to you, uh, and then they rotate three times to talk to different people and they also sent thank you cards afterwards. So it was awesome to see the lessons that the kids carried away. So it was awesome to see the lessons that the kids carried away. And a special thank you to, you know, the 11 other folks that took time out of their day to have that positive experience with our kids. Finally, at the high school, we're gonna go to Mr. Black's honors U.S. History class. They're studying World War I and the Roaring 20s. So some of the cool activities they did is they did a numbers mania exercise. So as they studied World War I, they studied the numbers of the war to build a better understanding. You can see some of the graphics and digital creations that they made. As well as when they were studying the 1920s, they created what is, they called a history and haiku. So they had a, flashbacks to my days of trying, that's the one with so many...
It's really short.
Five, seven, five.
Five, seven, five syllables, right? Yeah. So they had to create haikus that summarized a variety of things from the 1920s. So again, just wanting to highlight some of the creative ways, you know, it's one thing to sit in a classroom and talk about the facts and details of World War I, but to actually engage and have some voice and choice in the work that you're doing to demonstrate your knowledge is a great example of what Mr. Black and our other teachers in the Social Studies Department are doing. And then finally, as we heard, there was an orchestra concert tonight. I think we had choir last night. We've got other concerts still coming up, Mr. Benson? Still coming up? So don't miss those remaining concerts. If you can't make it in person, you can go to strongnet.org, S-E-S-T-V, to watch them live or on demand. And just a reminder, in a couple weeks here, Wednesday, December 20th is the last day of school for our students. We've got a professional workday for our staff the day after and then we will be closed for winter break from Friday, December 22nd through Wednesday, January 3rd. I don't know why we put those on there because I'm sure everybody knows exactly what those dates are. But just as a reminder. And so that's the timely information for this month.
Thank you. I'm sure there are some people counting down the days.
Yes.
All right. Next on our agenda, Board of Education Other. We do have some things here that require separate votes.
Ms. Housen, we missed policy.
Did I miss? Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, sorry about that. My computer was jumping around. We do have first reading of several policies. Michelle or Haley, do you want to touch on anything? I know it's a first reading and it'll be back on the agenda in January.
Yeah. We can have a discussion later on.
Okay.
Ask you all the chance, don't continue to look up.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, Board of Education Other. First is a resolution that requires a separate vote. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves a resolution to make provisional changes to board policies and administrative guidelines and forms to comply with HB 33. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stovcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Questions or discussion? Cameron, can you explain to us?
Sure. So as we know, House Bill 33 transitioned from the Ohio Department of Education to the Department of Education and Workforce. There's different roles. This is just saying, we have a lot of policies and guidelines and forms and, you know, we will, as we update those, we'll update the correct terminology. But until such time, we understand if it says the Ohio Department of Education, it intended to be the Department of Education and Workforce.
Thank you. Any questions? George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have another resolution that needs, requires a separate vote. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves a resolution to repeal Resolution Number 23-10-26 declaring the necessity of submitting to the electors of the school district the question of the issuance of bonds at the March 19th, 2024 election. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stovcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. George, can you explain what this resolution means?
Yes, so at the October 26, at the October, it was October 26th board meeting, the Board approved Resolution 1 of 2 to move forward with the bond issue, but then decided that the focus on the renewal levy and that we're not moving forward with the bond project at this time. So since that renewal was approved, it's kind of, nothing's had, this is to take formal action to officially table the bond project for the March levy. So it's documented and we have it on our minutes that we did approve Resolution 1. Now we're approving a vote to table, to repeal it from the initial vote, so.
Thank you. Any questions for George? Hearing none, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number three, under Board of Education Other, is a 2024 Board of Education Meeting Dates Discussion. Turn it back over to Dr. Iba.
Yeah, so at this time, every year at the organizational meeting, and you guys will vote on the official date, we threw out January 11th as the organizational meeting date, but you vote on your meetings for the upcoming school year. So we typically follow the second and fourth Thursday of the month. Those exceptions are noted there. One of those exceptions is in August. We do that for the first Thursday because of hiring. That way we could hire staff prior to new teacher orientation and other start-of-the-year events. On November, in November, just on how the calendar fell, we proposed the first and third Thursday. That removes us from the Tuesday before Thanksgiving break and we don't have to have that conflict anymore. And then we stick with our typical one meeting in December, which is the first Thursday. So other than that, it remains the consistent pattern. So what I would ask, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Housen, if there's any discussion, any concerns or conflicts with this, let's hear those now because in January, at your organizational meeting, this will be the docket that will be set up for you to vote on.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns of the dates?
Is there any consideration for moving the December 5th meeting to the week after?
Next, December?
You have plans December 5th?
Yeah.
Well, you're really prepared.
This feels early.
Well, it feels early and I may have plans.
Today's the 7th, though.
Yeah, today's only the 7th.
That's why I was checking before, it is the first week now, so it's no different.
Yeah. I hit forward.
It doesn't matter to me.
I don't think I have anything. I mean, I know for sure I'm not gonna be here February 22nd, but, I mean, you don't have to change a meeting for me.
We won't, Laura. Are we all in agreement for December to move the 5th to the 12th?
We'll be done, we'll be like, who was missing today?
It'll just be in the newspaper.
Yeah, like always.
Hearing no objections, we can move the 5th to the 12th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. All right, get back to my agenda. Item number four, be it resolved that the Strongsville City School Board of Education approves reimbursable expenses for Michelle Bissell. As outlined in the exhibit, Polaris Career Center will reimburse the district 50% of approved expenses. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stovcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any questions or comments? These are expenses for the Capitol Conference that we attended at the beginning of November. Thank you, Michelle, for going down and broadening your horizons, learning more about public education. Any other comments or questions? George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Item five, be it resolved that the Strongsville City School Board of Education approves reimbursable expenses for Sharon Kilbane as outlined in the exhibit. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Second. Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Ms. Stovcek. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Sharon, for attending Capitol Conference. George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Abstain.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, be it resolved that the Strongsville City School Board of Education approves reimbursable expenses for Laura Wolf Housen as outlined in the exhibit. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stovcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Abstain.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item seven, miscellaneous. Does anyone have any miscellaneous announcements?
I just want to say, and I, I'm gonna be bad at this. I took my granddaughter, because she's an athlete at the high school, and they do that where they read to second graders. And I saw a whole bunch of kids coming in and doing it and I just think, well, what is the name of the foundation that does that? What's it called?
I think it's called Second and Seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I couldn't think of it. And so they read the book and then each child gets it.
Oh, nice.
And the kids just loved it. And I just got to go because I had a driver. But I loved seeing it. So I just wanted to say thank you to that foundation for doing something like that. It's great for the kids.
Yeah, that's great. Other miscellaneous?
I have two. One, I was able to attend the choral concert yesterday and I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Hyer and Ms. Iker. And most importantly, a shout out to the students because they just are outstanding. It gives you goosebumps, it gets you into the holiday mood. But more than once, I heard other parents go, "My gosh, these are just high schoolers." But they sound, you know, I'll put Andy up against the Cleveland Orchestra anytime. So I did want to give a complimentary shout out to them. And while I was walking in, I saw Jimmy Avery and he is a well-loved, if you're anywhere near the high school, everyone knows Mr. Avery. And so I just wanted to congratulate him on his retirement. I told him I was gonna be conflicted and I may not vote for it, but I also want him to enjoy his retirement. So congratulations to Jimmy and we look forward to recognizing him in May.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Okay, hearing none, meeting notifications. We need to set the date of the organizational work session meeting as January 11, 2024, 7:00 PM here in the meeting room at the Administration Building, 18199 Cook Avenue, Strongsville, Ohio. Next, under meeting notifications...
Hey, I think it was an action vote.
Oh, is that an action vote?
Yeah, but let me update the mode.
It said action information, so.
Let me, give me a second to update the blank.
Okay.
This year flew.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stovcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item two, we need to appoint a president pro tem for the 2024 organizational work session meeting. Do I have any nominations?
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
I nominate Mrs. Bissell.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none, we will appoint Michelle Bissell as president pro tem for the 2024 organizational work session meeting.
We still have to do the vote.
I was, oh, sorry. Do you need to fill in the blank?
George, do I have to abstain?